Please rise and salute the flag. Roll call of the members.
Mr. Feranti.
Here.
Ms. Gravolisi.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mr. Visconti.
Here.
Mayor Irego.
Here. We'll start tonight's meeting with the athletic certificates. Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to recognize our winter and spring Northeast Conference All-Stars in all scholastics as voted by all the coaches in the Northeastern Conference. We do keep in mind that a number of these seniors are on a senior trip and will not be here, but nonetheless, I will call their names to be recognized. We'll start in the winter. We'll start in the winter with boys' basketball. NEC All-Star Scott Wantafusco. In girls' basketball, NEC All-Star Carolina Betero. In boys' indoor track, NEC All-Star Anthony Arias. In girls' indoor track, NEC All-Star Luana Babosa. In girls' swimming, NEC All-Conference Isabella Veraldi. Also in girls' swimming, NEC All-Star Leila Sesic. In boys' swimming, NEC All-Star William Arias. Also in boys' swimming, Rakid Cussage. Also in boys' swimming, Ashton Huang. Boys' swimming, David Del Rio. In softball, Northeast Conference All-Conference Player Alexis Aykovielo. In outdoor track, NEC All-Star Anthony Arias. Also in outdoor track, NEC All-Star Jared Benson. In girls' outdoor track, NEC All-Conference Gianna Mahoney. Also in outdoor track, Carolina Betero. In outdoor track, NEC All-Star Luana Babosa. And also, we have NEC All-Star Chloe Giordano. And we have a voted Northeast Conference Coach of the Year in boys' track, Sam Ross. In baseball, NEC All-Conference E.J. Leoni. In girls' tennis, NEC All-Star Luisa Gil Vidalas. Also in girls' tennis, Lena Hugin. In boys' tennis, David Fahn. The following, I believe, we will recognize but are not in attendance. If anyone is in attendance, please come forward. For boys' lacrosse, Richard Brienna. In girls' basketball, Erica Cheever. NEC All-Star in baseball, Matthew Cravata. NEC All-Conference and outdoor track, Ryan Doucette. NEC All-Star in boys' lacrosse, Nixon Morales. Nick Sajko. Also in lacrosse, Matthew Stazio. In lacrosse, we have an NEC All-Star and also the boys' NEC Goalie of the Year, Cam Mazza. Zach Carifio. And NEC All-Conference Boys' Lacrosse Offensive MVP, Eric Boer. In girls' lacrosse, Lily Delariacona. Camilla Cali. Jenna Wells. Taylor Sajko. NEC All-Conference Girls' MVP, Kiana Napolitano. NEC All-Star in boys' swimming, Andre Cavallis. NEC All-Star in girls' basketball, Emily DeGiulio. NEC All-Star in ice hockey, Wayne Santolo. Also in ice hockey, Matthew Cravata. That's it, must be one heck of a trip. Thank you.
The committee will take a two-minute recess. We're back, and back to our regular order of business. We will take up the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to begin the superintendent's report tonight by introducing the committee and the public to our new Deputy Principal of Revere High School. We are very pleased to have Leah Tuckman joining us, and I can tell you that I spoke to her current boss yesterday, who said to me, "You've just won the lottery." And based on the other references that we spoke to, and her interview, and everything that we've learned about Leah already, that seems to be a consensus thought. She was selected by a panel of interviewers that included, of course, Dr. Perella, but also parents, teachers, students, and administrators, and she was by far and away the first choice overall. Each of her former employers and her current employer, as I mentioned, recommended her with glowing reviews. Leah earned her bachelor's degree in Spanish with a minor in education from Haverford College in Pennsylvania, her master's in education from Leslie University, and her certificate of advanced graduate studies in urban educational leadership, sorry, urban education administration from the University of Massachusetts at Boston. Ms. Tuckman's 19 years of educational experience includes working for citizen schools, teaching high school mathematics, serving as the mathematics department chair at a charter school in Boston, and most recently, serving as a mathematics specialist for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That experience brought her into districts all across the Commonwealth. She's worked extensively with English-language learners and is certified as a cross-cultural language and academic development educator. That experience, her knowledge of effective school practices, which she gained visiting all of these different districts across the Commonwealth, and her fluency in both Spanish and English, as well as her experience as a school administrator, will be assets to our students and the staff at Revere High School. So I am very excited to introduce you to Leah, and Leah, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Far less intimidating than it was five minutes ago. Thank you. I'm really thrilled to be here. I have been sort of watching Revere both internally and externally for a long time. As Diane mentioned, I've been in maybe 70, 80 districts across the Commonwealth, and this is a district that has really stood out to me as having really incredible leadership and promoting a lot of leaders from within. This is not my first time in this room. I've spent many, many hours here, but I've never met you, and I'm very excited to meet you. I've run professional development here. I've sat on the Five District Partnership Steering Committee for six years now, and a lot of my CAGS classes were taught by such people as Dr. Vidalas and various other Revere employees. So I feel like I know you, but I don't actually know you, and I'm really excited to learn more over the next several years. As Diane mentioned, I've been in schools. I was a teacher for many years. I was a department chair, and what's most important for me about schools is relationship building and sort of educational excellence. So those are the two things that I strive to really focus on when I start here at Revere High School. A few other things before I turn over the mic, I know everyone has a lot to do this evening. I just want to mention that, as I said, relationships are at the core of everything I do. When I was a teacher, I did every club I could possibly do. I ran the GSA. I did robotics club. I took kids on educational sort of outdoor ed adventures. I even actually have a master's degree in out-of-school-time education. I don't know if you even knew that that existed. But it really is quite important to me, and that paired with my commitment to sort of equity and educational excellence is what I'm most committed to. So thank you for having me. It's all about the kids. I'm excited to see so many kids here today, so thank you.
I don't know if any of the committee members had questions for Leah.
Well, I'm always the one who speaks up first, but I must say that you gave a wonderful overview of where you have been, and so there are not a lot of questions to ask. I think I inferred from what you had just said about that you had an excellent opinion of Revere and so forth, but why this job at this time? Why did you decide to join us? We're delighted you did, but why did you decide to join us now?
So as I mentioned, I've really, for some reason, I mean, I have so many reasons for being committed to this district, and over the last six years, I've sort of seen how leadership really does trickle down and how the central office impacts school leaders, and how school leaders impacts teachers, and how teachers impact students, and it's like no other district I've been in, honestly, and that is the truth. Even when I was talking to my supervisor who called you last night, she was like, "Revere, great choice, Leah." As far as high school is concerned, my first job ever was in a high school. I taught math in high school for many years. It's my favorite age group, and I have tremendous respect for Dr. Perella, and I feel very excited to be a part of that building leadership team in general. I could go on and on and on, but I do want to respect everyone's time. I hope that's enough information for why this job at this time.
That's enough. We look forward to hearing from you over a long period of time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Any other members? Best of luck, thank you.
I just want to say, welcome, and I look forward to getting to know you as well. You have a great leader with Dr. Perella there, so at the helm, and I look forward to getting to know you. I have kids coming up in the high school, and I'm sure we'll talk more.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The next item in the superintendent's report is actually one that I'm very excited to report on. As we've been talking about for quite some time now, we will be beginning our exploration into the building of a new high school at the end of this month. The board is slated to vote us into the eligibility period, which will begin on July 1st, and there are a number of things that we need to accomplish during the eligibility period. Among them is the establishment of a new school-building committee that will oversee this multi-year project, and we're going to wait until after the July 4th holiday to begin that exploration, start developing that team, but we do need to be ready to announce to the MSBA who our team is by the end of August. So as we begin to move on this path, where we start to explore what are the kinds of things that we need to have in our new high school, what will schools look like 50 or 70 years from now? It's a daunting process to think that that's what we're planning for. What kind of a building will serve kids for that many years? What kind of infrastructure will that building need to have in order to meet their academic and social-emotional needs for all that time? But we haven't been sitting idly by, waiting for the board to make that announcement and waiting for July 1st to come. In fact, a team of educators and students and parents were able to go to a design charrette program put on by the MSBA with two other school districts who are at the same state of exploration that we are, and we were pleased to have as our core team, led by Dr. Perella, but also attending Mr. Costa from the STEM Department and Ms. Jennifer Core, as well as Evelina Adolphus, who is one of our parents and the past president of the Revere High School PTO, as well as students Amelia Visque and Augusto Gonzalez were able to attend, along with Dr. Vidalas as well. And the mayor, and Mr. Visconti, and Mrs. Rizzo, and I were able to attend portions of the very beginning of that process and then leave, while the rest of the team did all of the hard work and thinking and visioning of what this school might look like that's going to serve this community for the next 50 to 70 years. And then we were able to come back at the very tail end and see what they had designed. And so, most of them are here with us tonight. Mr. Costa and Ms. Core weren't able to make it, but the rest of the team is here, and I'm going to toss this over to Dr. Vidalas and the rest of the group to talk about what their experience was and help us all start thinking about or imagining what our new school might be. And I want to just alert everybody that you will see some drawings and ideas in this presentation, but that is in no way to imply that this is what the school will look like. We have much more thought and work and thinking to do, and a lot more voices to engage before we're ready to really say what our school, our new school, is going to look like. So, Dr. Vidalas?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So I'd like just to tell a little bit about the process and introduce the team and let them take off. And first, I just want to thank everybody for letting me be a part of that. I can honestly say that this process was one of the most unique and transformative experiences in just a two-to-three-day period that I've ever had in my professional career. It was so different than anything that I've ever experienced. I spent a long time talking to Dr. Perella, and Mr. Costa, and Amelia, and Augusto, and Evelina, and Ms. Core, over those three days about, wow, this is so different than what we've done. And what was great about it was MSBA had brought in some of the best architects from all over the country who did this work pro bono to give us this experience so that when we enter into the next phase, we'll be prepared to know what to expect. So they began by asking us, you know, "Think about the type of school that you want to have, not just the building or the facility, but the programs," and they said, "Programs lead the design." So what kind of program do you want your kids to experience? And we had some rich, deep, thoughtful conversations with Amelia and Augusto, leading the charge as students were going to experience that, and thinking about how this new building is going to really be more than just a school, it's going to be something for the community. And they were just touched that the superintendent and the mayor were there, and the school committee people. We were the only district that had all those people there because it means so much to Revere, and so it was just such a great experience for me and for the team. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. As we moved on, you know, I'll introduce the team. We began thinking about what our vision was and what the programs were, and they can kind of take you through that. I think that this is a picture of our team. We have the two architects, Matthew Lowe and David Stubbs, as well as someone from Northeastern University, and Vivek Mishra is a Northeastern student who's in the architect program, and this team touched them so much that they agreed to come and work with us in the future. So there are architect students that want to now work with Revere because of this team that we put forward. So I'm going to call up Dr. Perella now, and Evelina, and Amelia, and Augusto to come up to the podium, and they can just kind of talk about the process a little bit. We have the slideshow that we presented. And again, this is just, this came out of just two to three days' work with some amazing people, and you'll see, you know, sort of, they took our vision and put it to paper. This is just one example, and, you know, I think it's really built our capacity to do some of this work moving forward, and really got us excited about the work. So it starts with Dr. Perella and the vision.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Dr. Vidalas as well, that this experience was wholly unique and nothing that I've ever experienced before in my 20-odd years in education. It was a real intimate connection and relationship between the students, and the parents, and the architects, and the administrators, to the point where, when we were driving, I drove them back to the airport on the school bus, and we were sharing pictures of children and communicating about maybe meeting up some other points in the upcoming year. And these people, the architects, worked till 3:00 in the morning for us during that evening as well to sort of really prepare the presentation. So I'm still, personally, I'm still sort of figuring out what the experience felt like and what to take away from it, but it is one of the, again, a beautiful, beautiful experience to have gone through, and I think we've got a lot out of it. So I'd like to ask you guys to talk about the experience first, and then we can kind of walk through some of the things that we found out.
Yeah, this experience has been great. I really seen this as an opportunity for us students to give a voice on this whole experience, and that means a lot.
One thing that I think is important to note is the whole process and the whole committee kind of looked at education in a different way, and it was kind of unique to think about learning and like the places that we learn in a different way, and it was like really abstract and a different way of thinking that I think is important because we're like used to so much, and they kind of redirected us in a way that I think is something that we don't always see, which was pretty cool.
I thought that from the point of being a parent and being included in the group, I was really touched and honored to participate. It was amazing experience and, I would say, groundbreaking. I think we have, you know, multiple conversations ahead of us, the plans, and, you know, definitely everybody wants to do a great job. We have a great expectations for the new high school, and just trying to figure out how to embrace it and how to find the best. And just trying to figure out how to embrace it and how to find the best recipe, the best, you know, projects, plans and how to make it happen, it's going to be a long process. But just being open-minded, I think this experience helped us to open our eyes a little more and understand a little better what we are getting ourselves into. And the process that it's going to be time-consuming, definitely it will be, but it's for the school that needs to last years, even decades. So once again, I'm very much touched and thank you for having me.
So it all begins with a vision, of course. And what we learned pretty quickly is that we weren't there to design a building, but to design an experience, an educational experience for the community, for students. So we spent a lot of time looking at the actual building itself, what we have presently, the assets that we have and what works really well. And this picture here is very interesting. It shows how our school sort of is pieced-milled in parts of our community. And you see houses sort of pushed up in different pieces of that whole field and of the campus. And also encircled are areas that are basically wasted areas that we don't utilize. For instance, we have a courtyard at the high school presently that's right off the cafeteria, but because it is surrounded by classrooms, we can't utilize it during the school day. It's a nice piece of land, but it's not properly utilized. This is also a map that we have of our present school and again, some of the things that really we liked about our school. And again, it was really not just about getting rid of what we have, but sort of taking what we have presently, the traditions as well as the building and seeing what is still applicable and what works really well. So for instance, in part of this building there is an amazing view of the city, well, gets a lot of sunlight. And something simple like that really appeals to students and teachers. And that's something we identified. And then, of course, we wanted to know where we are going in a sense that we are, a lot of, one of the things we learned that was, I thought was really interesting is that all schools are basically on the same design as the one-room schoolhouse. And it's, what we've done in the past 150 years is sort of duplicate those one-room schoolhouses into many more rooms. And we just create more floors and more rooms and we're not really thinking about what, how education has changed. So first, again, the vision drives us, the students drive us, but we have to make sure that what we're planning and what we're thinking through is not just for today, but where we see the needs going to be in the future. Let me go back one more time, sorry, Dr. Kelly. Some of the things that we talked about is obviously future-ready, making sure that this is an inviting building or structure as well as an inviting school. We do think it's important to make this a community building as well as a school building. And safety is clearly an issue for us, physical, emotional and psychological. These are things that are foundational to any building and any school that we create. And these are some of the designs that you're going to see in the next few slides are just examples of how we can rethink what education looks like. So for instance, most schools, if you saw an old picture of a classroom, you'd think we'd all relate to it, has all the chairs lined up nice in rows and the teacher's desk in the front and a chalkboard or a whiteboard. Well, the schools of the future are not going to look anything like this because the offices of the future don't look anything like this. What we were creating before were sort of mini-factory systems that we would train students to be able to go into factory work or office work, but that's not how, that's not how corporations and how businesses run nowadays. So we have to rethink our designs, something that's comfortable, something that's inviting, something that's going to really get our minds going and stimulate thinking and learning. These are the things that drive what we're looking for and what makes us special in Revere. And just as an aside, I like to say that those two days that we spent were two of the most exhausting days I've ever experienced in any job, really. I went home every night and went right to bed because we were wrestling with ideas, we were debating, we were non-stop thinking through this incredibly important decision of how to create a school. So back to this, you know, these are some of the things that we, that were driving our thinking of what we wanted to feel when we walked into that building. We have some designs, of course, now the designs like Dr. Kelly mentioned is really just think pieces. This experience was about preparing us for what we're going to do and not to create a final product. So in the one on the left, the idea, this is from Ms. Core, was that we were thinking of a casino, basically, where you have to walk through the middle of the casino to get through to any part of a casino, of course. And around the outskirts of the middle of the casino are all the shops and things where people go to. So we imagined the middle being sort of a learning common or a common area for students and faculty to not only comfortably sit, but to do work, to work on projects individually or collaboratively, where going through it would get you to all the other parts of the This is another example of why we think including green space inside schools is important, especially in the urban area where we don't have the luxury of being surrounded by forests, let's say. One of our, one of the groups that was there was Stonemont High School and they were challenged with the idea of trying to find what to do with their, I think they had 120 acres or something. That's what their challenge was, was what do we do with all this land? And they were thinking of gardens and forest trails. We don't have that in Revere, but we can bring it into the building itself. And this is part of the conceptions that we were thinking about. This is another example of a unique learning space that is not typical for education systems. But I think you would look at this and automatically think Google, maybe Apple, maybe some kind of tech firm or innovative organization, and that's what we need to become. Whereas far too long, we've been toeing the line of traditional sort of conservative educational structures that, again, were based on models from the 1850s. These are the things that we wanted to feel when we entered this facility because this is going to be an exciting process for all of us. I hope to be there on that first day, I really do. And one of the things that we went through as an exercise was really to walk through some of the feelings that we would feel as we walked into this new building.
I'm doing all the talking here. Does anybody else want to say anything regarding this?
Someone else say something.
All right. It's good. Come on, who wants to take over?
So then after the first two days, the architects basically took our ideas and put them on paper in a way that we can't do because we're not architects. And they basically came up with this and they kind of followed the same structure that we were thinking, like the middle is a big common area and then the outsides is basically where you get all the different aspects, like where you need to go to if you need certain things. And this is just another view of that. So they basically took what we were thinking and what we were saying and made a structure that we can look at, which was pretty cool.
If I could jump into, the thinking behind this is that the first floor, this is going to be a multi-level building, on the first level would be more community-based sections where people would be coming in. It could be things such as our MGH Health Center partnership. We could have, we are projecting to have a culinary arts program that would create a restaurant for people in the community. We would love to have other partnerships. We have a fine arts section where maybe we can provide evening events as well as plays and things of that nature. And of course, athletic section that would be connected to the fields outside. And the idea is that on this level, we would have more community engagement, whereas on second and third levels would be more secure educational programming taking place that the students would be able to utilize this first floor, but most of the learning, we call them, the term was learning studios, right? Learning studios, our classroom, because we're trying to rethink education here, would be on the second and third levels in a safer location.
If I could jump, excuse me, if I could jump in just to pretty much summarize what Dr. Perella said, but also add a little bit how we thought about, you know, building the school in this particular way, going up and finding quieter spaces. We had a student from Northeastern and they shared with us, he shared with us how their library works. And it's a pretty much brand-new library with multiple levels. And one of the questions was how can you study if you need to concentrate and focus? Since we're rethinking, you know, the whole process of learning and education, it's going to be more collaborative learning and getting together in groups or in pairs. They can do it definitely, you know, students and teachers all together on the first floor, but going up, they would gain this, you know, more silent or more quiet place, quieter that would allow to those, you know, studies that they need to take place as well. Thank you.
One thing I really liked is the school is very spread and very open, which I need, which students I think need. We don't want to walk into school and feeling like, oh, it's a Monday, like it's a whole week. We want students to walk in and feel like, oh, it's a new week to learn. And I feel like opens, the open space could really refresh students' minds, the trees could relieve stress and yeah.
So on these slides, we're looking at, this will be the first floor, which would be, again, an open space design. And the most of schools today are very narrow, there's narrow hallways and corridors to lead the classrooms. And there really isn't many places outside of the cafeteria, for instance, that students can gather, meet, discuss, sit down, relax. So this idea is really based more on a college campus vision. And I think the idea is, again, to allow us to be non-restrictive for students, to create comfortable places where people want to sit and talk and work and collaborate, inviting areas that also are not going to turn a student's mind off as they walk in. A lot of students come into traditional schools and probably are not very excited about being in schools. They're not the most glamorous places, they're not as inviting as they can be, especially high schools. Elementary schools tend to draw in more as far as that goes, but high schools tend not to be. So in this idea, and again, these are just ideas, this is what the architect heard from us and applied. We would find places that would have green spaces as well as things that, such as waterfalls and things that just really sort of alert people and really activate the senses of students, not just in their mind academically, but also a sensory experience. One of the things we thought about is having a central stairwell, a place where not only students can walk up, but also sit, which, again, if you think of a college campus, you'll see, this is not very atypical for colleges, but it is atypical for high schools. This is walking through the first floor and for, yep, we can start at the beginning. This is what the architects spent all hours of the night really creating for us. This would, we'd walk into the first floor, it would be very open, the areas such as the right-hand side, we envisioned a waterfall there or some kind of natural, natural sort of, something of nature that would really draw our interest and excite students. This is a place where students will want to come. And this is really the crux of our problem, a lot of students don't want to come to school. They don't, they're not inspired by it, they're not excited by it, it doesn't really activate them. And we need to think about how do we inspire students to want to come here every day? Because it's hard work, obviously, learning, and we have to draw them in as best we can. So that was part of our experience. This design, again, was just a think piece, it was not meant to be a final product. What I could tell you from what we learned from this experience is that we have to rethink how we approach this. It's not about building a structure, it's about rethinking of what we want to have within that structure and then finding the way a building can really reflect those needs. And I think that is really the most challenging part of this process because we can create buildings, but we have to really think about what's going to fill that building up and what's going to happen within that building. Does anybody else want to share final thoughts?
One final thought, I just, I wanted to share with all of you that we really spent a lot of time and effort discussing multiple things. And of course, the core plan is not going to happen within two days, but we talked about safety within the school, we talked about how we gonna, or how we would like to see the daylight within the building, not just classes that are, you know, closed in and, you know, students struggling with those spaces during the day. I heard students saying that sometimes they feel like robots or almost like in jail. And this is not what neither, you know, teachers nor parents want to hear. We are right now just starting a new process. And as groundbreaking as it is, I would encourage everyone to open their minds and be willing to rethink these opportunities and structures because they are quite different. And I'm sure we're going to have people asking, "Why? Why do you want to do it this way? This is not how the school looks." But going into the future, we really need to talk about it.
Any members or?
Just a final thought, great job with the presentation and so excited for you guys to be able to do that. One of the things that really impressed me and, you know, I'm not sure if it was, if you're able to see it from some of the photos, is they really want schools, the schools of the future, to be flexible and adaptive. So they're thinking about office buildings now, they turn over every four or five years. And in all of the pictures in this, you could see that there were walls that could be moved, there's furniture that's easily moved around, a lot of things on wheels, so that you can really reimagine it for what you need. And that was one thing that really impressed me is that this school will be adaptive and it will meet the needs of the community and it will change over time, but it'll be a flexible building, it won't be so rigid with just cement walls. It'll be something that you can be able to move around. And I think one of the great things that we had talked about is the work begins now on how we prepare our teachers and our kids to be able to really take this building that we're going to envision. And it's going to change between now and the time that it's built and prepare for the type of instruction and the type of experiences that kids can have. So it's a really exciting thing and, you know, I'd certainly like to hear from the committee members as well, but I, thank you, that was really amazing.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dr. Vidalas. As a, as a kind of participant, in terms of watching what you guys put together, I have to say you did an amazing job. It was really incredible to see our team. I was so proud of the thoughts and ideas that were coming from each and every one of you, especially the students. And that was, it really showed how much passion there is in this district and how thoughtful and I think creative everyone was. The one word I had like goosebumps, you know, as I watched you guys, because what they didn't tell you is that they had to perform in front of everyone. And they did an incredible job. And as a, you know, I may be a little biased, but I watched the other two districts and I was just blown away by how you guys presented and how proud I felt about the city and about what we were doing. And we are embarking on what will be the single largest investment, public investment in our community. And we're doing it with an amazing team. And this is just kind of a first half step towards thinking about what this building looks like. And it was really inspirational and just amazing. And you guys did an incredible job and I want to thank you because I couldn't think of better people to be representing the city and better people to be thinking about what a new high school will look like in 50 years. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. So thank you all very much. I guess I think that everybody has said exactly it. I'm really excited to start this piece. And one of the things that we've already talked about planning over the summer and this team has agreed to do was try to kind of reenact this process a little bit with larger groups of people so that more people can have the experience of going through the design charrette process. And I know that Augusto and Amelia have agreed to stay and see this right through to the end, even if they graduate from college before, right? You guys heard it, they promised, right? So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
You have a great legacy.
Mr. Sunella. Mr. Sunella.
I think you have to be commended for the initial aspect, just tying myself with part of the old way of thinking. And I was privy to be a part of the new high school, open campus, state of the art. But it was literally done by a few. There was very little parental support that I knew, not support, but involvement that I knew of. It was an all-electric school, there were big change artists going from copper to aluminum. There was supposed to have been a pool, there was supposed to have been a skating rink, I mean, and as change artists came and everything, it was totally alien to education for want of today's needs. You made reference to- You made reference to the future, this school is roughly 50 years old, you know, and it, it served the purpose because of people in it. My concern here is, the state regulates reimbursement from the size of an auditorium for the size of whatever, whatever, whatever. You're anticipating major open spaces, gardens, like Babylon and everything, is the state in line to fund these kind of activities, or is the community going to be on the hook for? I mean, they're, they're very stringent in what, what they're paying for. The, the concept and the involvement, I applaud you, I mean, I, I just think this is a leap forward, not even a step forward, and from some of this archaic, I am pleased to hear tonight, and I'm glad I'm, I'm hearing what I'm hearing, and I wish you well. But, but let's just, you know, reality has to be here, and somebody mentioned, some community has 128, because they don't know what to do with them, they can send them to us. Um, you know, I mean, that's where we're going to be in the mind, is where they're going to put it. But again, I congratulate you. Thank you, Mr. Mia.
Thank you, Mr. Sinella, Dr. Dr. Kelly.
So just to answer, Fred, you're absolutely right, that's a great point that you bring up. One of the things that we, we want to dream big and think big and really capture the world in this idea and design process, but we also have to be a little bit realistic in terms of what we can afford. And the state absolutely puts restrictions, as you just mentioned, on how big a cafeteria can be, what are the square foot feet required for a lab science classroom versus a music classroom, how many seats do you need to have in your cafeteria? All of these things are limited by the MSBA, who is going to be funding 80% of this project, unless we decide to pay for other things on our own. But the one piece of encouragement I have is that MSBA put this group together, and they asked us to do this work and think outside of the box, and they couldn't really commit to any kind of relaxation on the rules, but they did give us, and their, their boss, Jack McCarthy, was there, so it was the very top echelon of MSBA that was there, and they were saying, we know we need to start thinking differently. So hopefully, we get to be those innovators, you know?
Any other members? Dr. Kelly?
So, the next item on the superintendent's report is actually a presentation from our Revere CPAC, which is our Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, and we have with us Jen Duggan and Michelle DeBellas from that group, who are going to talk to us about all of the incredible work that CPAC has been doing over the last year in the Revere Public Schools.
I printed them out, do you want me to hand them out, or just, this is okay? The presenting, oh, you want to pass them, okay, yeah, sure. Well, thank you for having us. Um, Jen Duggan, President of CPAC, and Michelle DeBellas, she is our secretary.
Thank you for letting us come tonight.
We wanted to do a little presentation on pretty much what we've done throughout this school year. We put a little, well, Jackie Roy put a little presentation for, for you to see everything that CPAC has done, and what we would like to do moving forward on the next school year. So, so far for this school year, we raised $15,000. That was with events we hosted, calendars we sold, merchandise we sold, what else did we do?
The big, the walk.
The walk was the biggest, yeah, the walk was the biggest. Um, we do have a lot of community partnerships, we work well with Row, Row, Row to Revere, they do a lot by donating, purchasing items for the parties we host. Revere Parks and Rec, we have a good relationship with them, also the Police Department and the Fire Department. Our community partnerships is, obviously, we have the mayor's office, we have the School Committee, the city elected officials, the School Department, and state legislation. Enzer and I were actually lucky enough about two months ago to, they asked us to come to the Speaker Delio's office regarding a forum that mass education was, was for higher education. They just wanted people there from the community, so they asked us to attend, which was really, it was interesting, and I was glad we got to, to attend. So the educational events that we host, which is usually we host one CPAC meeting a month, and what we've done so far is we've had workshops on Boston versus Bullies, behavioral management, ABA strategies, I mean, basic, sorry, basic rights by Federation for Children with Special Needs, transition planning for students ages 14 through 22, an ADA HD workshop, and then an emergency safety planning with fire and police. The family events that we've held, so we do one meeting a month, and then we do one event a month for the, for the families. We did a meet and greet ice cream social, a Halloween party, Winter Wonderland party, Valentine's Day party, and activities for all ages, preschool through high school, cooking class with Ms. Sally and Ms. Diana from Parks and Rec. What else, oh, additional stuff we have done is ice skating, we had the Seacoast Sharks, they came out, and actually, one of the Seacoast students was dressed up as the Easter Bunny, and skated around with the kids, which was really nice. But we, the Seacoast kids are so great with, with what we do, because a lot of the kids attend the Beauchamp School, and obviously, they're next door, so they're really, they're really good with the kids. Then we did a story and music time at the Revere Library, and then just recently, this week, we did a riding glide, which was, at the Whalen School, we shut down the parking lot, and were able to let the kids ride their bikes and scooters freely with no traffic, no, no worries. Parks and Rec came out with the bouncy house and snowball machines, so that was a nice little treat, too. The fundraises, sure. So we also did some fundraises, as we talked about, which was wonderful with the money we raised. So we did a Fuddruckers Night, we did Light It Up Blue with the Citywide Dress Down Day, which had a great response. We did a May Raffle Calendar, which was incredible. In fact, the Lincoln School kids, which I have to talk about the third grade, I get emotional with this, because, yeah, so, they did. It's just with this, it hits me, my son's autistic. They did such an incredible presentation on autism, and then we got to go, we gave them a popsicle party, but they talked to us, what, everything they learned. Eighty-five children, blown away. They did a buddy program with kids, they raised $700 with our May Calendar Raffles, and the things they said were just so cute for the age. Autism's not contagious, that was one, we got a chuckle. Their brains just think differently, it's okay. One said, they're just like us, they smile, they dance, and it was just so enlightening. It's wonderful, and that's this community, that's everyone here, that's everyone in the community, it's just incredible. So sorry for getting emotional, but they blew us away. We did a seals of totes apparel and scarfs, and we also did a fundraiser night at Uno's. And again, the second walk, amazing, it was an amazing attendance, we raised a lot of money, the kids had a ball. It was a wonderful time, we saw many faces, there was so much support, so much volunteers, the school committee, councilman, the mayor's office, the rec, everyone came together, it was great. So, this is where we get to our goals, what we'd like to see from this year to next year. For the upcoming year, we'd really like to increase parent and guardian involvement. It seems like no matter what we did, unfortunately, the attendance was just extremely low. Same familiar faces, same kids at the events. We need some help and maybe some guidance on that end to get some ideas going, but we just didn't have it the way we thought we would. And we tried to do a lot of different things for a lot of age groups, we're just missing it somewhere, we really need that to just come together more, that's what we're striving for.
I, I just have to tell you on that, that's something that we all struggle with, like all of the PTOs say the same thing, we have the same issue when we run events for parents, and like you said, it's the same handful of people that come all the time, and, so whatever you learn, please share with us, it won't do the same, you know?
Yeah, so that's where we're at, we want to enhance our partnership with Revere Parks and Rec, which we've started that process going with the Community Center. We want to continue the Special Olympics and, and help develop more of that, that, that was an amazing thing that we got running. I'd like to get it maybe more with older children, build up from that, but it's just a wonderful experience, I think, for everyone, everyone, not just the kids, it touches everyone. We'd like to develop the new therapeutic programming and have, like, some help in hand in that with the new Community Center, and we're thinking for back-to-school night, if we can somehow go to each building, just get our faces out there more on what we do. So, thank you.
That's our contact, until if anybody would like to reach out.
Perfect, thank you.
Mrs. Rizzo.
I'm not asking you any questions, because I don't want to cry. I, I just can't say enough about these women, along with Vincenza, Jackie Roy, amazing. They work hard to bring in different things all the time. We've always had amazing CPACs, these women have brought in some speakers that I, I've heard before that have been amazing. It's not just about autism, it's about special needs. So sometimes I feel that some parents only see it and view it as an autism thing, and I do think the word needs to get out to be more open, and, but they try it, they do everything possible, and every time, maybe one or two parents might come, then you might not see them back. I know it's a busy time, because it's in the evening, they want to get their children to bed, they want to relax themselves, but they're even going to start trying to do, visit the different schools, and they just, every month, they're trying to figure out something new, and I just applaud you, woman, because you're giving up your personal time also with your own children, and I, I can't ask for more, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
I want to say thank you, because you support us, you come to all our meetings, and we appreciate that, because you listen to us and you help us.
Because you have coffee and stuff on it.
Any other members? No, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
So the last item on the superintendent's report is, we wanted to take a minute just to share with everybody, as we, in a bittersweet way, come to the end of the school year, I know that parents are thinking about what they might do with their children over the summer, so we wanted to share some of the offerings that we're going to have in the Revere Public Schools, and parents can reach out to their child's principal for inform, more information on any of the programs that Dr. Vidal is actually going to highlight right now as he oversees our summer programs.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So, we have a number of summer programs going on in all of the schools this summer, we tried to organize them by the age level. So, the first slide that you'll see are the elementary programs. Every program that we have this summer is running 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Each, each school has, has a little bit of a different timeframe, so at the Beauchamp School, we're going June 24th through July 8th. At the Garfield Elementary School, their program is June 19th through July 8th. The Hill Elementary School is June 19th through July 11th. Now, the Lincoln Elementary School, there's some work being done this summer, so they have moved their location to the Hill School, you'll see that in red, and they're doing June 19th through July 11th. Paul Revere Elementary School is doing July 11th through August 8th. The Whalen Elementary School is June 24th through July 25th. And our district-wide Special Education Program, the Extended School Year Program, will be located at the Garfield Elementary School this year, that's a change from the Beauchamp last year, back to the Garfield, that will be June 24th through August 1st. Now, all of those programs are Monday through Thursday, so there are no Fridays in the summer, and the week of July 4th, they'll also be closed on the 3rd and the 4th that week. At the middle schools, Garfield, Susan B. Anthony, and Rumney are each hosting a transition program, they're all the same dates, Ju- July 8th through July 25th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00, that is for fifth, current 5th graders who are rising into 6th grade, and they'll do a transition program, open to all kids, it's free for anybody who wants to attend. Additionally, there is an English Language Learner Enrichment Program for middle school students that will be housed at Revere High School, and that will be July 1st through July 25th. Those will all be 8 to 12, Monday through Thursday. At the high school, we have several programs. The district-wide credit recovery for any students who need to recover credits will be held at Seacoast from July 1st through July 29th, there will be three blocks of time, so each block will be, will be 90 minutes, 8:30 to 10:00 AM, 10:10 to 11:40, and from 12:20 to 1:50. So any student that requires, that needs to recover any credits can go to Seacoast this summer and work to progress through their high school credits towards graduation. Additionally, any 8th grade student that is rising into the 9th grade, we are offering a summer bridge program from July 15th to August 1st, that will be located at Revere High School. And these are for students that just want to get acclimated to the school, anybody that might be nervous about going up to high school, it's a big transition, so we want to start to build relationships and get them to meet some of our staff here. Mr. Bowen, the Grade 9 Assistant Principal, will be running that program, along with some teachers and counselors. Additionally, they also have an English Language Learner Enrichment Program, held at Revere High School for high school students, that will also be July 1st to July 25th, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 12. And finally, Ms. Diana Finn, our Guidance Director, has put out a flyer for our rising seniors, current juniors who will be seniors next year, and this is called the College Boot Camp, and it's a partnership with several local colleges, Northeastern, Boston College, Curry, Salem State, to name a few, that will be located at Revere High School. Those times are a little bit different, some of them are full days, that's July 19th, 20th, and 21st, and then again, a month later, July 30th, 31st, and August 1st. And that will be for kids who are going up to senior year, and give them an experience with some, some college counselors and whatnot, really, to, to get an, an idea of what to expect a year from now, and to help them through the planning process and the application process for college. And finally, we have the Summer Foods Program again. Our food program is housed throughout the city at different locations, a flyer is going home, there's also a flyer that we're going to tweet out and put on the school webpage, but I just wanted to, to highlight, starting on the 24th, which is the Monday after school gets out, the locations, Beauchamp School, and the locations, the parks that you see above, will have free lunches for anyone in the community that wants to come, there's no restrictions on that, and then at the bottom, we have additional places that will start just a week later on July 1st, and that will go every day, Monday through Friday, July 1st to August 16th. And so, you know, you'll have the times there, we'll also try to tweet this out and get the information out there, so it'll be community drop-in, anybody that wants to come can get a free lunch. And that's what we have for the summer, thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. So, one of the things that Dr. Vidal mentioned was the relocation of Lincoln School programs to the Hill School, and that is because we are going to have a significant amount of work that will take the most, the better part of the summer to complete, and that is upgrading the electrical system throughout the entire building in preparation for a future installation of air conditioning. One bit of bad news that we got on that building is that the MSBA did not accept our application for a new roof and new windows. They saw the need and understood and, and felt the application was good, but they had so much demand this year that they rejected any requests for windows and doors, so our window project was not accepted. And they were accepting roof replacement work only if the roof was over 35 years old, which ours is not, it's 28. So we were disqualified from the roof project as well. They did encourage us to reapply next year, which we will certainly do and will continue to do, but that was a bit of a disappointment that I wanted to share there, so. But that was a bit of a disappointment that I wanted to share there. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Any other members? Mr. Sinella.
Before I start, I would make reference that I would strongly recommend applying through Massport for the windows and the roof. They're looking for outside satellites and they're, from what I understand, generous. So I don't think it would hurt, you know? But the other thing, too, is that I noticed that the Lincoln School will be at the Hill School at the same time in the same hours. I think the schedule at the Wayland is different. Would it be beneficial to have them, I mean economically, maybe to put them in the same building at the same time? But is it going to interfere with each other? Or should they try to have their own time, say, at the Hill School?
The principals have worked together on the schedule, and they have, similar to what we did last year at the Beauchesant School, where Garfield was doing some work, and they were able to coexist. The two principals were able to do that. And so they just tried geographically, what's the closest place? Where's there some parking? As well as the scheduling. And so the two principals, Ms. Humus and Ms. Lomus, have worked very closely together on that. It's a bit of a tongue twister. But they worked together in order to do that, and they've communicated it with the parents. So they think they have a pretty good plan, and the facility seems to work. I think the piece about the West Revere Complex is they also have the middle school, Susan B. Anthony, that will be there. So they didn't want to have three in one building.
And one more, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent, the upgrade of the wiring for future air conditioning, that's not going to be done this summer?
The electrical system will be done this summer. I'm not aware that anything beyond that will be finished.
Well, we've been talking about air conditioning for the last three or four years.
The whole system has to be rewired.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But while they're doing the electrical, wouldn't be hooven to do the air conditioning at the same time?
So that job alone of rewiring the building is going to take the entire summer. They're hoping it's going to be, I mean, they're going to work hard to make sure it's done before school starts, but they're already worried about a timeline, just for that piece.
And that work has to be done before the air conditioning can be done? So that's, you know, it's kind of two separate projects. First step is to get the upgrades on the electrical, and then we can get air conditioning installed.
And I'll also add that this is the more intrusive and extensive part of the job because they have to go through every wall and every ceiling and every room and do all of that work, so.
And then get it all cleaned up after.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2020 budget. And we will open up a hearing in accordance with provisions of Section 38 N of Chapter 71 of the Mass General Laws. The Revere School Committee is conducting a public hearing tonight relative to the Revere Public Schools' proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 school operating budget. And at this point, I will open up the floor to any proponents. Seeing none, I will close that side of the hearing and now open it up to any opponents. Seeing none, I will close that side of the hearing and hear from any school committee members. Mr. Ferenti.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm a proponent for the budget. I think it's in pretty good shape, and I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferenti. Any other members?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Ferenti, as your recommendation as chairman of Ways and Means, is that?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferenti?
Do you want me to do the presentation?
Well, I think we've all put in so much time and worked so hard in making all the figures work. I think that we're all proponents of it, so maybe we should just move ahead with the vote.
We have a quick presentation.
Okay, great.
If that's okay for folks at home.
Is it going to coincide with each series, or is it just a general?
It's just a general overview of the budget for folks at home. And then it ends with a summary of what each series, where we came to the total on each series. And I was thinking it might be a good way to prime the information. So it's all information that you all have seen because of the incredible number of meetings that you've had and all of the work that you've done looking over the budget. But for the folks at home, they'll understand why you're voting on particular figures for each series.
That's fine.
And I'd invite Mr. Cruz up to the podium if he wants to help me with this presentation. He, of course, did more work than anybody on this budget. And I also, you know, while we're doing thank yous, I really am appreciative to the committee. I think that we had in the end about five or six different Ways and Means subcommittee meetings. And not only the members of the Ways and Means Subcommittee, but other members of the school committee itself were present for those meetings as well. And both Dr. Vidala and Dr. Mokaba did an unbelievable amount of work, dotting i's and crossing t's and making sure we had right people in the right place to get all of this information correct. So just a quick overview of the budget. I keep forgetting this mouse doesn't work. We have a number of different funding sources. And so to highlight here, more than half of our budget actually comes from the state in the form of Chapter 70 funding. We do get just under a third of our budget from the city's net minimum required spending, which is about almost $35 million. So our total, in terms of state and city revenues for spending that we're required to spend on the schools, is that $103,222,137. In addition to that, we budget for, and Matt's office oversees, another $21 million in expenditures. And that's funding that we get through state and federal grants, some fiscal prudence that we have in terms of carry forward from one budget year to the next, and other items like that. So the grand total amount of money that we'll spend this year in the Revere Public Schools is actually just under $125 million. It's an awful lot of money, and Matt and his team do a great job accounting for every single one of those pennies. In terms of staffing changes, we have a net total change of eight staff members, bringing our full staff of the district to 1,196 employees. You can see the changes here on the screen. The administrative position was the addition of the Executive Director of Data and Accountability in my office. We also added a special educator, three paraprofessionals, one bus driver, two crossing guards, one staff member at our parent information center, and a tradesperson position. In addition, we reduced this budget by one technology position and by one bus monitor position. And that was based on needs of the district. I don't know if, Mr. Cruz, you want to add anything?
That is perfectly accurate. And I would know from six months of looking at the numbers.
So our budget is really split into two areas. We spend money on salaries, and we spend money on other stuff. So the state requires that we categorize every dollar that we spend into a particular series for salaries and then into a particular series for other stuff. And so we're going to go through the salaries here, and then we'll take a look at the other things. And basically, a simple way to understand it is salaries are what we're paying people, and everything else falls into the other stuff category. So if it's not being paid to a person, it's other stuff. And so here we have, there are actually nine series that the state government recognizes. We only use eight of them. I actually asked Matt today. I'm like, remind me why we don't have an 8,000 series? And I forget already what you told me. It was...
Debt service reduction.
Yes, which we don't have.
Which we don't budget for on the school side.
Yeah, okay. The city pays for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, and we wanted to give the comparison of last year to this year. You'll see here that we have a 5% increase in our salaries. And this is, as you saw on the previous slide, really just maintaining the same staffing that we already had. Granted, there's eight new bodies, but in a system of 1,162 employees, that's inconsequential. So we're really just maintaining the status quo here. But for the 1,000 series, which is really school committee and central office, that includes the business office and all of the staff in my office, we've gone from 1.6 million to 1.8 million. For teachers, principals, assistant principals, and pares, you'll rightfully see the greatest increase here. That's just a little bit over, it's actually $2.6 million. Much of that is due to pay raises. But remember, this is virtually, this is about 85% of our employees fall into this category. Under health, athletics, transportation, parent information services, and security, they all fall into the 3,000 category. And these are basically any employees that are not involved directly in classroom instruction fall into the 3,000 series. And that's gone up modestly from 1.3 million to 1.4 million. The 4,000 series is custodians and tradesmen. The 5,000 series is employee benefits, retirement, unemployment. Crossing guards fall into this category. And you'll see there's been a mild reduction there. Under community schools and stadium, this is actually a change that the mayor's office has made in how they're categorizing some of their funding. So we had some employees, some staff for the community school, that were coming into the school department budget, although it was taken off of Schedule 19, that the mayor has moved into his Parks and Recreation Department. So you see a significant drop in that salary. And then, of course, the last two series, the 7,000 series is building improvements, which wouldn't be salaries. So you see, not applicable here. And then the 9,000 series is our programs with other schools for which we don't pay any salaries. And so you see, that's not applicable either. So overall, on the salary side of our budget, we've seen a 5% increase from just under $58 million to just over $61 million. Looking at the same series for non-salary accounts, and you can see the descriptions are similar. So, but now we're not talking about people and who we're paying. We're talking about departments and what we're spending there. So on the school committee and central office, that budget is actually down modestly from $648,000 to $644,000. The school budgets are up. And that's because cost of supplies and materials and other things are up, and that's reflected here in this budget. For health, athletics, transportation, parent information center, and security, again, that same category, a modest increase there as well. Utilities, operations, and networks, you see about $150,000 reduction. And that's actually coming through our network program where, prior to, a week and a half ago, we had completed a major piece of work that we had, in the last budget, appropriated $150,000 for that we didn't need in the budget this year. We're rethinking that at this point, but that's a topic for future study. Unemployment benefits were level funded. The 6,000 series, if I go back one slide, was community, school, and stadium. We don't have any non-salary costs for them. So that's why you see here that that's not applicable. Our building improvements are level funded. And our programs with other schools, unfortunately, is where you see a significant increase on this page. And those are situations beyond our control. They include charter school payments, outside special education payments, and other programs like that that we can't dictate the cost of. So here, in our non-salary accounts, you see an overall 4% increase. So our total budget, when we combine our salary expenditures for FY '20 and our non-salary, brings us to $89,947,444. And that's the amount that the committee will be voting on tonight. And to look at that breakdown differently, these are the same figures just taken from the other slides. In the 1,000 series, where we have the school committee and central office, we had the salary amount and the non-salary amount taken together are $2,525,588. So when Mr. Ferenti, who's the chair of the Budget Ways and Means Committee, gets to calling on the line item numbers, this is where these numbers are coming from. It's the combination of the salary and the non-salary that we just went over for each series. Okay? Matt, do you want to add anything?
If your head is not spinning from all those numbers, the biggest thing that we would want you to keep in mind is, our job is to have the finances support the vision. So the educational vision that the superintendent and the school committee come with, the business office job and the team that's doing this work is to find a way for money to get behind that vision. So it should be no surprise to you that the largest increases in the budget fall in that 2,000 series, which is dollars actually reaching the classroom. And so you can feel that in the bigger picture here. And the city council has already appropriated this $89 million to the school department. So what's happening tonight is that the school committee is saying, here is where we want to spend that $89 million that we have been given. And so they'll do that by series. And once this is done, we'll get to work on making this money work for the kids. That's what's behind all the numbers that you heard about tonight.
And I guess one thing that I'll add, too, is that we, for the fourth year in a row, have had virtually no leeway in this budget due to the state's change in the definition of poverty from low income to economically disadvantaged. I am still hopeful, and I think others of you who've spoken to folks at MASSS and MASC and the state legislature, that the state is going to come through with some kind of a funding package for education. And I'm actually hoping that we have the difficult problem of having more money come July, that we have to figure out how to spend. And everybody jokes, Fred will joke that I have my wish list already drawn up, and I won't pretend that I don't. But certainly, we would want to convene a lot of voices, as we try to do with everything, and have parents and teachers and administrators and school committee members in the room, helping look at what the vision and the mission is and defining how we should spend any additional dollars that we have.
Mr. Ferenti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, a budget of this size, close to $90 million, takes a lot of people to do this. And obviously, the gentleman standing there, Matt Cruz, I'm sure put his life into this for the last six months. So I'd like to thank him and his office for preparing the budget. Dr. Kelly, Dr. Macobin, Dr. Vidala, for their assistance. The mayor and his people for assistance. The committee, myself being the chairman, Carol Ty, Jerry Visconti, plus Ms. Gravellisi, Ms. Rizzo, and Mr. Sinella, all chipped in to make this budget work. As you can see, it was a little bit of an increase from this year to last year, but thank God, we got extra money, so we were able to take care of needs. My second point is that there will be people not voting on particular items because they have family members that work for the school department and aren't able to vote on those particular series. At this point, I would like to start the proceedings on the budget. I would like to start with the 1,000 series administration. The amount be voted on is $2,525,588. So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Irego.
Yes.
On the 2,000 series instructional services, the amount voted on is $56,251,438. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Not voting.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Not voting.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Not voting.
Mayor Irego.
Yes.
On the 3,000 series, other student services, $8,146,528. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Not voting.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Irego.
Yes.
The 4,000 series operation of plant slash maintenance, $8,631,398. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Irego.
Yes.
On the 5,000 series, employee benefits and insurance, the amount voted on is $1,184,600. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Not voting.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Not voting.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Not voting.
Mayor Irego.
Yes.
You can change it.
Mr. Visconti.
Mr. Visconti changes the vote to a yes.
Okay, well said. On the 6,000... On the 6,000 series civic and community services, the amount is $42,638, so move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
On the 7,000 series, building improvements, $843,494, so move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
On the 9,000, on the 9,000 series programs with other schools, $12,321,760, sorry, $1,760, so move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
And on the final vote, the total budget is, the vote on is $89,947,444, so move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Budget's fast. Very good. Great work. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
So move. Second roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Next item is a report of subcommittees. The first, Ms. Ty.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, because you served on this, and Ms. Gravellisi and I were serving on this committee, unfortunately, we were not able to come to a conclusion at this date, and therefore, I move to place this on file.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed? So move, place on file. Next item is the superintendent's evaluation. I will present this. We had, the committee met a week and a half ago to go through the superintendent's final evaluation, end of cycle evaluation, and we'll just, I'll just go through the standards, and if any committee members want to interject or include anything, please, please do. The standard of, standard one, instructional leadership, there was an overall rating of the superintendent of proficient. Standard two, which is management, there was an overall rating of proficient. The standard three, family and community engagement, an overall, an overall score of proficient, and in standard four, professional culture, an overall score of exemplary. Any members have any additional comments they'd like to make? And none? Ms. Ty?
Yes, I mean, it was a very interesting process that we had. I think we all expressed our gratitude to Dr. Kelly, especially because we've had so many financial struggles, and that she has been leading the way throughout the state, speaking up for us and for our kids, for our families and our needs, and has been extraordinarily energetic and knowledgeable and articulate in leading that way for us, and I for one hope she continues doing that well, well, many years hence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. Any other members? We'll go on to the next item, which is the superintendent's contract. We are going to keep that in...
Shall we, shall we defer this?
We're going to keep it in committee for the time being.
Defer until the meeting of...
Until June 17.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is old business. Any old business? Seeing none, new business. Mr. Visconti.
Mr. Mayor, we have a late communication from Matt Cruz addressed to the school committee to vote for the approval of the Transportation Department entering into a three-year lease for two 2019 ICCE 77-passenger school buses. We will make three annual payments on each lease and return the vehicles at the end of the lease. The lease will be funded through appropriations for regular transportation in the 3,000 series, and I believe we need a vote on this.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Any other new business? Any school committee interests? Mrs. Rizzo.
So we've come to the end of another fabulous year, and some people are moving on to other positions, and we'll miss everyone, but at this time, just want to say, it takes a big heart to help shape little minds, from the custodial staff, secretaries, paraprofessionals, and teachers, and as Revere School Committee, as a Revere School Committee, I want to make sure that we give a very well, happy, long retirement to the following staff, and that would be Mark Malfatano, Susan Ross, Gail Richardson, Patty Geranti, Ellie Rappa, Barbie Rolland, Alberta Verengia, Kathleen DeGustino, Cynthia Trifaglia, Michael Bonanno, Dawn Velzani, and Lucy Perkey. We wish them, for all the work that they've done, a future that is worth every bit of hard work and dedication that they gave us. So from the school committee to them, we're jealous.
Well said. Any other members? Ms. Ty?
Well, this is, this is a small thing, except if it affects you, and I know the superintendent has been really working on the budget issue and everything, but she also took the lead on another issue. If you take an academically, an academically challenging course, and then you take the test, so you can get a three, four, or five, and it will pass, and the state colleges accept a four or a five, and you don't have to take that class, and so that saves your parents or you money. But if you get a three, some state colleges do, and some state colleges do not, and as I said, it might not matter to a lot of people, except to the parent who's paying that extra money to take the course again. So I commend Dr. Kelly for taking the leadership on that, and I hope that the legislature will follow through and vote that in. And there'll be certainly hearing from me, and I hope from other people, too, about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. If I can just add to that, so this is an issue that's been ongoing, and they anticipate it might take through the whole next legislative session, another year before anything is acted on, and it really does make a huge difference for kids. For some of them, when they score a three on the, on an advanced placement test, which by national standards is passing, and there are some examples, like for the AP Calculus exam, UMass Lowell will accept a three as credit for their calculus course, but UMass Boston won't. And so kids who are commuting to college are disadvantaged if they live in the Boston area compared to kids who live in the Lowell area, and that just creates inequity that I, that I think is really inherently unfair. And, you know, for a lot of kids who do live near or in poverty, it can be a game changer on whether or not they can afford to go to college, because it's not just the tuition that they have to pay when they have to repeat those courses. If there are enough of them, like one of the students that I talked to in preparation for my testimony at Beacon Hill yesterday, is a student who has three AP courses that she got, she actually took 10. On seven of them, she scored either a four or a five. On three of them, she scored threes, right? So those three courses, not counting for her, would mean a whole nother semester of school, that she has to pay not just the tuition for those three classes, but the fees and everything else that goes with it. It's about $15,000 at any state college for a semester of school just for the tuition piece of it. And that's what, when you iterate this process, when this happens to a kid two, three, four times, it ends up costing them tens of thousands of dollars, not just the course that they have to retake. So I think it's an important issue, one that, it's important for the public to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other members? Seeing none, we'll move on to motions. Any motions? None. At this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment with the understanding that we will be back as a full committee on June 27. All right. Go Bees.